Good evening and welcome to the Franklin Board of Education meeting for February 8th, 2023. The meeting has been properly noticed. Could we have a roll call, please? Dr. Beer.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mrs. Wachowski.
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Dr. Khan.
Here.
And I am here. And Mrs. Sapursky and Mrs. Larson are excused.
Thank you, they are. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three, approval of the agenda. I would move that we change, that we move item nine, E and F up to A and B and just move everything down from there. Because we have a couple other, a couple people that would probably just as soon get out of here after that.
I second the motion as it's presented.
All right, motion's been made by me and seconded by Dr. Beer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Forest Park Middle School, FLL presentation, please. Mrs. Jones.
All right, come on, kids. I was hoping they'd take this off by themselves. This is our first LEGO League team, 57030, and they formed a league, mostly middle school, elementary school, Robinwood. They formed a team to compete. It's a worldwide theme. The theme was energy. And so, and the goal of this first Lego, of course, they, one part of it is to make the robot do all sorts of things. But the second part is try to figure out how you could make an impact on your community. So they'll tell you all about it. They'll introduce themselves as they go through their presentation. And what they realized is, in all this research they put in, they realized that our school could, our district could benefit, our community could benefit from some of their ideas, which is why they're here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Jacoby and we're Team Hamster Power. So know what you're thinking, strange name, right? Well, we'll get to that in a minute. We're a first LEGO League team, and for those of you that don't know, first LEGO League or FLL introduces its teams of kids to science, technology, engineering, and math through hands-on learning. Participants gain experience with problem-solving and grow critical thinking, coding, and design skills by building and coding a LEGO robot to navigate missions in the robot game. Teams also participate in a research project to identify and solve a real-world problem based on that year's theme. This season, the theme is energy. As we began discussing ideas for our energy project, we got into a conversation about kinetic energy from humans, like energy generating bikes or ellipticals. Then someone said the fateful words, like a hamster wheel? Our original idea was to outfit Forest Park with a horde of hamsters running on wheels in each classroom to generate electricity to power the school. After some research, we realized that hamster energy had several major flaws. For one, it was not efficient at all, but two, we might have PA issues. However, we still liked the hamster energy ideas, so we became Team Hamster Power. During our research, we also learned that the cost of utilities is the second-largest cost for school districts. This led us to settle on our project idea for the FLL competition, making our school more energy-efficient. We would now like to share a proposal with you because we think we can reduce energy costs at Forest Park by incorporating geothermal heating, solar panels, and energy-generating floor tiles. Here's Rhie Han to tell you about geothermal energy.
Our team wanted to come up with ideas that would benefit us and our community, so we decided to make a positive impact on our Franklin Public Middle School. Please keep in mind that our biggest advantage is that our school was built only a few years ago, and we can execute our plans and recover funds. Geothermal is a great use of heating and cooling without much waste. It does not require a big invasion of property, and it fits the natural ecosystem. It also maintains a 50 to 55 degrees Fahrenheit temperature. Many schools in Wisconsin are already using geothermal. Fond du Lac High School was the first school to install geothermal over 20 years ago. Through communications with their directors of facility, we learned they save almost $300,000 per year in energy costs. In summary, geothermal's a great use, a good option for our district to reduce energy at our middle school. Now Corbin will share about solar panels.
Solar panels are expensive, but the average 6kW panel generates $1,500 annually. So in its lifetime of at least 25 years, it'll generate $37,500. This is a lot more than the price to purchase a solar panel, so you'd be making profit. Then, we could install solar panels on half the roof, save half the money while still generating energy. We could also use sponsors and grants to cover the cost from little to none. Another option is that we can rent out the school's roof. We could do this partnering with the We Energy Solar Now program. This is what the New Berlin School District is doing. Through this partnership, New Berlin is getting paid almost $100,000 each year to have solar panels on their schools. So to conclude, solar panels will reduce the utility costs for schools and might even generate a profit. Now Vince, to talk about pavagen tile.
Pavagen tiles are tiles that you step on to produce energy. Through communication with the company, we learned that each step produces five joules of energy. We will most likely put this in a hallway or cafeteria where lots of kids walk through. Another thing is that they are shaped as triangles, so that wherever you step on them, they will produce energy. And they may not produce energy fast, but they could be a great learning experience for students, too. And keep in mind that with grants and funds, the costs can be greatly reduced, and their school is still new, so we can, we don't have to worry about it getting replaced anytime soon. Now to Johnny with the challenges of our energy ideas.
Some of the challenges we may face, it seems to us that there are a lot of upfront costs. For example, geothermal energy has a higher initial cost than conventional heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. Geothermal energy also requires digging into the earth. The cost for solar panels on our school's roof, which is approximately 131,000 square feet, costs roughly $1 million if paid for outright. Then with the pavagen energy generating tiles, they will cost roughly $500,000 plus labor costs, and on top of that, they're designed as triangles and can be hard to clean. Pavagen tiles also do not work if they're being stood on by two people at the same time. On to Diego.
We've heard some of the advantages and disadvantages of geothermal, solar panels, and pavagen tiles. Geothermal energy is a good option for Wisconsin. The upfront costs are easily recouped in the energy savings over time. With solar panels, any extra energy generated could be sold back to the power companies. There is also an option to rent the space for the solar panels to another company. Our school district could then be paid for housing solar panels in addition to utilizing renewable energy. Alternatively, the US government has announced grants for energy-efficient schools. If we were to obtain one of these grants, all of the upfront costs would be paid for by the grant. This would then save the school a lot of money. This would reduce the second-largest cost their school has and benefit for years to come. Now to wrap up our conclusion is my teammate, Rachel.
You heard my team members talk about how we plan to make our middle school more energy-efficient. These changes would reduce the utility costs for our middle school, which will allow that money to go into other programs. In the course of our research, we spoke with the school custodian to get measurements and details about the physical building. We consulted with an energy expert in Washington DC. We spoke with the New Berlin School District about solar panels at their schools, and we modeled some of our ideas on what we know works for them. We had email communication with representatives from the pavagen tile company about their product, and with Fond du Lac School District about geothermal heating and cooling at their high school. We also reviewed government and private company websites to learn about funding and grants for energy-efficient schools. We shared our plans with the high school robotics team to get feedback on our presentation. We shared our presentation with an energy researcher from the National Renewable Energy Lab, and we discussed our ideas with the middle school principals to see what the school administration thought about our proposal. We think that our ideas would benefit our school by utilizing reusable energy to reduce the cost of utilities. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Excellent presentation, so the hamsters are definitely out?
But the t-shirts are super cute.
Yeah. No, very informative. Thank you, thank you so much. I learned a lot, so you did a great job.
Can we watch the robots do something?
Oh, Mrs. Wachowski wonders if your robot is operational this evening?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
It looks cool.
It is, it is.
It is?
It is.
Go ahead.
Yeah, let's see it.
Got a lot of form.
I can get it.
While he's doing that, just a quick note, from all the resources we talked to and the proposal you have that we sent ahead of time, this is the year to do it. Apparently, a lot of funding is being opened up by the government for energy savings. And so, you know, if your team does talk to some of these resources, you'll learn that this is the time to do it. There'll be a lot of savings, so.
Thank you.
Wow.
What do you enjoy more, the presentation and the research, or the building of the robot, or is it kind of equal?
Certain people enjoy different things.
Yeah. That's why you're a good teammate.
Is your, is competition season over? So I know that you, I know you did really well in your first competition. Are there more competitions this year?
So, not for us.
No.
So we had a second one after our first one, but then we didn't make it through, so we wouldn't have, so we didn't have another competition after that.
It was still worth it, though. Good job.
Thank you. Does anybody have further questions?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Picture opportunities.
Oh, yeah.
Please feel free to take a picture, parents.
You're so inclined.
Move closer, like you like each other.
Like you've been working together long days and weekends on this. Big smiles.
You did an excellent job.
Should be, all right, I'm not gonna go, your name's very good.
He really did do an excellent job.
Really did do an excellent job.
Jacoby. You started us out. Corbin?
Here.
Excellent. Leon? Nice chef. Isn't it a really nice chef speaking, too? Diago, right? Oh, sorry.
I'd never heard of those. They sound perhaps not quite, not ready, correct, yes.
The tile, it's interesting.
I thought it was interesting that Fond du Lac's been doing geothermal for 20 years, and the whole New Berlin thing, renting out the roof space? They just did some research.
I've driven by and seen the massive miles of like, solar panels they have out there?
In New Berlin? I've never noted it, no.
They have like, big fields of them by schools.
Wait, are they using the energy, or are they renting?
I don't know. So if they have these big fields of solar panels, the kids will get. All right, thank you. That's gonna be tough to top. Community comment, nobody has signed up, so I will not go through the reading of the community comment unless somebody wants to comment. All right, consent agenda, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Our motion was made by Mrs. Wachowski, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. School board calendar, key communicators meeting Monday, February 13th at the ECC at 5:00. Regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023 at the ECC at 6:00. Board connect for the community Wednesday, March 8th, 2023 at the ECC at 5:30. And regular Board of Education meeting will follow March 8th, 2023 at 6:00. District administrator update, Mrs. Bennen, please.
All right, thank you. So we want to thank the first LEGO League from Forest Park Middle School. Obviously, they head it home now, but for being here tonight, there's a few of them here. Team Hamster did a great job. It's great to hear the work they've done on their energy research and what other districts are doing. Gives us a lot to think about. So thank you for being here after school on a Wednesday to put in time to teach us. Really excited today, we had the Assistant State Superintendent Kiona, Kiona Jones join us from the Department of Public Instruction. So they had reached out to us about three or four months ago, saying there's about a handful of high schools they want to visit in the state specifically to look at our CTE programs. We were one that was picked, so Mr. Volo and Mr. Thompson, Andy Thompson, did a great job putting together an intro of what CTE is for us in Franklin Public Schools. And then we did a walk through the building and visited six or seven different classrooms, saw the students in action, extremely proud, not surprised, but proud of how articulate our students were, how much pride they had in our work. That was noted, obviously, by us every day, but also by our visitors, the five that came through from the Department of Public Instruction. They were seen across different classes, which was really neat. We had some that were in our education, education capstone classes, and then we later saw them down in one of our construction classes. And just kind of building that, finding a place for every student to find their areas of interest was really exciting to see, and that then they've grown through that and the connections they have. We spent a considerably longer amount of time in our saber manufacturing business, students showing us projects they're doing for the Education Foundation, for different sports teams, for the theater production. They just have a variety of things going on. If you're ever at the high school, they have great displays of all the work that they're doing in that tight space that produces a lot of really great work. We spent more time in construction also with Jay Haskell, talking about the builds that we do indoors before we partner to do our large home build, which will also be done with soon. And we also got to see the electric, electronics work that they do prior, and then they go add into these smaller builds of these houses, so kind of how there's interdisciplinary connections that are taking place. And we also visited the early childhood education capstone class, that's Linda Krause's class. Really exciting to talk to students that are partnering with classrooms at Pleasant View, so they were building a lesson on the solar system, talking about their excitement to go work with the students that they've gone to multiple times throughout the year. So it was really neat to be able to showcase those items, you know, for the state, for them to see, and to have the compliments and the excitement that they had walking through the building. So it was nice to have two hours with them. The state superintendent would have been with them, but the president visited today, and I guess takes precedence, I don't know. But we were very happy with our visit. It was a really exciting moment for us as a city and as a school district. Tonight, during Ms. Christine Cody's report, you're gonna hear a little more about our At Risk Report. We come back mid-year to kind of revisit it, but specifically around the work that the high school's focused on with our graduation rate improvement plan. It's an education thing, it has an acronym, it's called GRIP. And so the next steps with that, and we've heard from families from our district, is having listening sessions. That was in the planning with that group. We've combined that work to have special education community listening sessions. WISB, which is the Wisconsin statewide parent educator initiative, is who we are working with to come in and facilitate these. So what it allows is every parent that's interested with a student with special needs that wants to come and voice their experiences. We're gonna have small group table setups with a facilitator to note-take at each of those, and it's very open-ended, the same structure we use as a continuous improvement school system with rounding of what's going well, sharing those experiences, what that looks like, where do we have room to improve, and what kind of ideas do we have. So it should allow for all voices. Those are planned for February 27th and 28th in this space, unless we get an RSVP that we need a bigger space. We have one right across that we can reserve. From 6:00 to 7:30, and then following those meetings, we'll look at themes and set action steps from there. If we hear that people weren't able to make it, it's offered virtually and in person, or that they weren't fully heard, then we'll obviously adapt to that, because the point is to hear first, so that we can then think about where we can look to improve, but also celebrate what is going well, because we don't want to overlook those things that we should continue. So there'll be more information that'll be pushed out on that in Christine's report from the team, but those are coming up in the next couple weeks. Monday's another exciting moment for our board and district, as we've started the key communicator group. It's internal and external stakeholders, meaning people that work for us and with us, to come together and talk about our coherence plan, talk to us about what you're learning from it. And our big piece that we work towards with this group, we meet three times this year, it'll continue into next year. The excitement of next year is we also start planning for our next three-year coherence plan for 2024 to 2027. So this will be one of many groups that can help give input into what that looks like. So that's Monday in this room, and that's about 50 people that are on that team. And then upcoming events just in our community through the district that stand out right now are Wednesday, next week, Wednesday, the 15th, the High School Broadway Choir Concert, that's at 7:00 PM. And then on February 23rd at 5:30 is the High School Art Gallery Night. So lots of exciting things going on, and hopefully we see people out at these great indoor events on, in the cold winter. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, reports, presentations, and other school board business, summer school course approval. Mr. Blessington, Ms. Sunstrom, please.
All right, good evening, everybody. We just, things really outline your executive summary, so we wanted to just be on hand to answer any questions that you had after reviewing it, so we don't have any formal presentation. But knowing that this is a routine item that you approve annually, we wanted to just give you an opportunity to ask any questions. What I, what do we, we did want to add, we do have our administrative staff secured for elementary and secondary. Haley Campion, who is a second grade teacher at Robinwood, will be our secondary summer school principal. And then Janine Bami, our current principal at Robinwood, will be our elementary school principal. So that's some additional information that was not included in your exec summary. So Anita and I are both available to answer any questions you may have.
What changes have been made from last year and a couple years ago? I know we've kind of switched to more fun classes, and I really appreciate that, but what, how is it different?
Yeah, we're still maintaining, like you said, the same vision around prioritizing enrichment and prioritizing the joy of learning. The changes that you're seeing, we're continuing our practices from last year on the four-day-a-week learning. There are some changes to some of the courses, so every year, we open this up to staff to see if they have ideas about improvements or other opportunities they want to offer. So in this gigantic pile, there are a couple of new opportunities at the elementary level. So one of them is like, C is for camping, you know, I'm sure you didn't read it, all the great details. There is another one that's like, can you dig it, summer gardener? I think there's a mindfulness one. So these are coming from our staff who are proposing these additional ideas and like, kind of the descriptions with that. And then some light tweaking of, remember last year we did for the first time that college counseling class? And so that does exist. We actually slightly changed the name of it, so it's like Summer College Application Workshop, and we had a school counselor run with this and really work with, you know, higher ed in preparing this. And he wants to further expand this, so you'll see that the description is updated and running for three mornings, but then he wants to offer some optional afternoon drop-ins, like he had, when he finished last year, he was very excited, we debriefed, and he had said something like, I think for next year it'd be fun to have these drop-ins. So some of these enrichment opportunities, you do get to see like, some movement along the way, and some things are still a little bit works in progress, like the dates of certain things are still being worked out. But we have a lot of really engaged staff at it, which is really nice to see.
Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, what would you say the courses that you're gonna be most at risk of not being able to run due to staffing would be? The high school. Okay. And then just goal numbers, do you have any sort of a goal for the number of kids you're hoping to see enroll? I would, I mean, the last few years, we've seen it get stronger and stronger, so I would love to see like, numbers like we had last year, or even better. Okay, so just continued growth? Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, the credit recovery classes that you have at the high school, is that a similar list than other years?
Yes, the list is similar to other years. I don't think we made any changes, still looking at those core classes that students need to graduate.
Do those kids sign up for these?
So.
It is optional, right?
It is optional, so like, we encourage students to sign up if they didn't pass a class, because then they could recover their credit during the summer, and it would, you know, either build their confidence for the next level. So I'm thinking like math, you'd wanna, if you can, recover it in the summer so that you could take the next level the following school year, or it kind of eases their schedule the following year if they can like, take the English in the summer that they might have failed. They don't have to double up English classes, you know, the following school year, they can focus their attention a little bit more. So our counseling staff and our high school admin usually does a really nice job, frequently communicating with students who are kind of, who are, who failed first semester to see if they'd be interested. And then, this is a very active area where, as the semester progresses this semester, the summer admin and the high school admin and the high school counselors and I will connect a lot as like, April, May, and June hit for the students who might be struggling this semester, and how to balance supporting them but being ready. So this tends to be like, big shout-out to the summer admin and secretary who works on this, they tend to do a lot of like, enrolling of kids the last week, because, you know, you might not find out you didn't get the credit until seven days before this gets started.
And we'll have teachers that can teach these classes?
So we, right now, I wouldn't say we have everything staffed, that's still to come, and we do staff on that enrollment, so we will do our best to staff it. If we can't staff it with a qualified instructor, then obviously we wouldn't run the class.
Last year, you know, I think when some students have enrolled in the morning and the evening session, and because of low enrollment, evening sessions were dropped, you know, so some parents were stuck about, because of the transportation, where you have the convenience, you know?
Yeah.
Is there any plan to kind of facilitate that? Because if, you know, parents usually, when they make the plan for the enrollment, they have X, Y, and Z plan, and all of a sudden, because enrollment, which you can't control, you know?
Yeah.
How can we, how can we facilitate that?
Yeah, I mean, that's an ongoing, I think at the K8 level, when we offer, you know, when we make sure that kids have a spot, we make sure they have a class for all of the sections, since the transportation is at the beginning and the end, so K8 that we can address. But it's definitely a challenge at the high school. If there's not enough students enroll in it, we couldn't run the class, or if we can't find an instructor, we can't run the class, so then that is tricky with that transportation piece. So just us, we work tightly with, you know, building transportation here and the staff to try to make that happen. HR works a lot with like, staffing on that as well. But yeah, it is, that is tricky at the high school level. In, you know, can we guarantee that they have the two classes? We really can't. And it's a little messier, because sometimes a student only failed one class, so they really do only need to recover one section. So maybe they have a ride to school but would need to be picked up at the halfway or whatever. So it is messy.
And for the high school, for the credits, if, what's the policy regarding if any students are going to summer break because of the timing of the summer course, and some families have plans, you know, so how, how is that high school credit affect? How many days of excuse are they allowed out of the hall?
We definitely approach everything by a case-by-case basis, and the summer admin works tightly with the family if a kid gets sick or misses a couple days. The teachers, the way that we do credit recovery is very personalized, so the school year teachers will communicate with the summer school teacher, like, here are the skills that we should prioritize for learning. And so if a kid misses a couple days, or gets sick, or whatever, that communication piece can usually still support the student earning the credit, or maybe there's things they can do outside of the class time at home if they miss a day or two. Obviously, if a family says like, we're going on a two-week vacation, this is a, you know, five-week program-ish, like, we would say like, this is, you know, your chance of success is very low, because that's 40% of the time, or something like that. So I think, if a family's gonna be gone for an extended time, then this probably isn't how they're gonna recover credit. But handling a couple days based on whatever is the situation, this illness or the quick family vacation that took a couple days, like, that can usually be managed with good communication at the time.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the summer school courses.
I make motion to approve the summer school courses.
Our motion, motion was made by Dr. Khan, seconded by Dr. Beer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. At-risk report, or at-risk status update, Ms. Cody, please.
I have two guests with me as well. It's my pleasure to introduce two guests with me. They, I know are very familiar faces, but I'll introduce them again. So Anna Mulchheim is our social worker at, I was gonna say, a little bit at Forest Park, Franklin High School. And then we also have associate principal Joey Jonas with me here this evening. And they're here, obviously, because they're very invested in like, really coordinating the effort. And they're here, obviously, because they're very invested in like really coordinating the efforts of staff and families at, at the high school. So, our goals this evening, we had come to you in October and shared some information about a cohort of students who were statutorily at risk of not graduating from high school. And we wanted to come back this evening and provide an update on that cohort as well as additional students who have been identified. With that, we would also like to share with you, as we look back at semester one, what are some of those impactful actions that we've taken that we really do believe have made a positive difference for our students? And then also, just sharing a few highlights, looking ahead to semester two as far as some of those continued or new actions that are being implemented.
All right, so, just so we are all on the same page of that definition of at-risk, I'll go over that again. So, according to state law, those students who are dropouts are automatically considered at risk of not graduating. And then, the following, if they hit two or more for that criteria. So, one or more years behind their age group and the number of credits. Also, if they are two or more years behind their age group and basic skills. Students who are habitually truant, so that's five or more on excuse absences. Parents, adjudicated delinquents, those involved in the judicial court system. And then, eighth-grade students who don't meet of the following. So, if they are below basic in those skill levels. And then, also those who fail to be promoted to ninth grade. So, here's our data from our fall cohort and then those who are newly identified. As you can see, we had 48 students in the fall. Nine were 10th grade, 11th grade, there were 13, 12th grade, there were 23, and 12th grade plus, there was 13. And then, at the House of Corrections, which is now known as the Community Reintegration Center, we had 19. So, from the data that we polled, we now currently are sitting at 29 students from that first cohort. So, we have five current 10th graders, eight current 11th graders, 14 12th graders, and then two 12th grade plus. And then, we also have an additional 30 at the CRC. So, one thing too, from that data that I want to highlight is that there is a 40% decrease. So, we had 19 students that are considered no longer at risk compared to last year, too. That is a higher number that we are seeing that are getting off that at-risk report. A lot of those students have improved intruency that we have noticed. So, compared to that data from the end of last year, this year, in the first months of school, they are no longer truant. So, it's good to see that their attendance have increased. So, then, they're no longer hitting both two of those indicators. A lot of students who have graduated or also moved out of district. So, that kind of brings that number down to that 29. And then, for the newly identified, we have identified 17 new students. So, two ninth graders, four 10th grade, four 11th, 12th grade, seven, and then, no, new 12th grade plus. And then, we have identified 11 more at the CRC. A lot of those students that were newly identified were because of their credits. Like, for example, if one student maybe was a half a credit short and they failed a class past semester, that would have put them on the list. So, for example, seniors would need to be a 24.5. And if they had less than that, so if they hit 24 credits, then they would be considered at risk. So, if a student failed a class first semester, they might have been put on at-risk when it's just that like half credit. So, that's what we've noticed for those students that were newly identified. A lot of them was because they might have failed a class first semester. So, it put them behind. And then, we'll get creative and do that credit recovery options or maybe an alternative school as well. A lot of our students that are currently on the at-risk report are already at alternative schools. So, it's nice to see that they will hopefully be getting those credits a lot faster compared to that traditional way.
So, some of the key actions that we took, and Anna did a nice job of highlighting that, we did have the drop-off of 19 students. So, some of the actions we attribute to that are noted here. So, we really looked at the students and their attendance. And most students that are on the at-risk report qualify for attendance and something else. So, when they drop off, they drop off because of attendance. So, we credit this, the support we offer families after the meeting that we have to discuss habitual truancy. And that's a required step with any student who is defined as habitually truant. We conduct the meeting, Anna's in all of those, as well as the appropriate administrator. And then, the follow-up with the team is really a next step that we try to ensure can address the barrier for the students' attendance. And like we, most of the time, we talk about students that are at risk, it's very personal. So, when we think of those attendance barriers, they're very personal. It's not that there's a theme of one thing, but we do try to figure out what is the thing or the things that are preventing them from attending and then put as many adults at the table to try to solve that problem. So, we've seen some success with that. We've even seen some success where there's multiple students in one family where we can improve attendance and drop them off the at-risk report. Additionally, our teachers work really hard every day to deliver instruction in a way so students grow, not only so that they're no longer defined as below basic, but also that they turn, that they attain the credit for the class that they're in. And credit deficiency is a big piece of the at-risk report. So, we did have students who were able to come off the at-risk report because they're no longer credit deficient. Some of that is because of alt-school placement. Some of that is because of the work our teachers do in the classroom. We've spent time at Franklin High School in the afternoon on PD days, really thinking about how do we have students find success in the classroom in multiple ways? So, whether that's providing them unique ways to see the curriculum for the first time or to review the curriculum or show what they know from the curriculum. Our goal is to ensure that students find access in some way, and our teachers are trying to get better at that every day. It creates more pathways for students to earn credit and then find their attachment to that class. Again, could be another way to help them attend even at a higher level. So, again, taking it back to that attendance piece. And then, lastly, we do have access to more educational pathways that are determined to be alternate, alternative pathways. If you remember last year, there was an approval for 10 additional Odysseyware license. So, we can keep 10 additional students in-house and somewhat give them the one credit or less credit experience they might need versus having a more drastic step of them go to another setting, which is Connect Learning Center or others that we utilize in the district. So, we've seen, had some success with that, to have students recover that one math class or that one English class that they'll need in order to graduate. Additionally, allows us to have a more personalized approach for those unique situations. When students no longer are able to attend in the afternoon, we have that as an option. We also can work through with our partners to have half-day programs that address other concerns that a family may have and get them the support they may need, such as mental health treatment or something of that nature. So, those key actions really allowed us to see that reduction that we're pretty proud of and to see some of those students drop off. And again, that number was 19 of the 48 from first semester.
In addition, we are working as a comprehensive team around the development and implementation of the Graduation Rate Improvement Plan. And again, this is research-based, it's pretty intensive. And the improvement plan is really, the intention of it is to improve the success rate of students with IEPs. But throughout this entire process, we know that if there is a successful strategy or a research-based strategy that will benefit students with IEPs, it's also accessible to any student who demonstrates the need. So, this again is a multi-year commitment. So, we are, you know, just halfway through year one. We will continue this process and the plan and implementation into the next school year. It's a comprehensive team. So, we have 20, I don't know, 23-ish, 24 members who are part of this team. And the team met in the summer for two and a half days to go through and do a data dig. We identified like the root cause of some of our concerns. And then, the action steps that we took are based on, you know, what, what we saw as some of the root cause. Also, this team is made up, it's comprised, comprised of administrators, like the core content teachers, student services, staff members. So, there's a wide variety of staff members, just representative, who are really invested in, in this process. It focuses a lot on adult practices. So, what are we doing differently and how do we know? And like I said, it's, it's, it's intended to focus on students with IEPs, but we've seen a lot of benefits so far.
So, these actions would be some of those preventative actions. We think of students who would potentially be at risk of not graduating. We're looking now more at our underclassmen and some of the strategies we've put in place to support them and also continue to support our upperclassmen. So, when we think of check and connect, that's a K-12 initiative. But from the high school experience, we've trained 20 mentors. It's a research-based intervention where a mentor will meet with their student one-on-one for about 15 minutes to a half hour each week. They'll really focus on engaging a family member. So, thinking of how they can communicate home and support the home message as well and then communicate with the school team. So, we're about a month in with that, and we have 20 mentors trained at the high school. That's a mix of school leaders, instructional coaches, but mostly teachers. It's, there's one student services member in the admin team. Then, the rest will be just teachers that use their prep time or their goal block time to check in with students. We've really seen those relationships flourish even in the first month and gotten some really positive feedback around that. Like, there's that trusted adult, that one adult who cares about me. And it's a one-to-one, like, it's a really powerful relationship. And we've seen some really positive things as we started. We identified students for this based on academics and attendance. Those are the two main indicators we used. And we're going to set goals to improve in both of those areas. Both of those areas affect at-risk as well, so we thought it'd be nice to highlight that. Some of the students that are in the check and connect program are already at-risk. The rest would definitely be ones we'd be concerned that would join in the future. Just to go back to some other steps, I think Ms. Bennet did a really nice job of highlighting the work that we're going to do to engage families. But that did come out of our GRIP work, and those next steps will be coming later in the month. Then, we'll use that to continue to engage with families and determine what we can do better at the high school and what we should continue doing. And then additionally, we really are working to educate the students in our building on how they can take ownership of their IP, how they can understand how it supports them, and then also lead their individual IP meetings. When you think of how powerful it is to have a student understand their plan, which is personalized to them, and then help them move forward in their goals and advocate for themselves alongside the rest of their team. We've seen some really strong gains in that as we started that this semester and really helping them prepare for life after high school in that transition. So, that's some additional work that's continuing with the GRIP team and some work that we're pretty proud of that we've been able to start in this first semester doing this work.
Some of this, too, I would say, the fun thing is, so we have the School-Based Mental Health Grant, you know, those funds. And so, some of the funding, like for the check and connect training, there's, it's a pretty in-depth training. And again, we have a high number of staff members trained in that across the district. And that was funded, that training was funded through the School-Based Mental Health Grant. So, it's like all of these different efforts we're making are, are connected nicely. And they, you know, they support one another.
Question, on the check and connect, are those all students with IEPs or?
Necessarily. So, similar to the at-risk report, there are students who have IEPs that are receiving that support, but it's not exclusively students with IEPs?
And one last little comment on the family engagement piece as well. I think, you know, one thing that we're really trying to take a look at is what are those questions that we need to be asking so that we understand, again, what is truly the student experience? And how are we gathering that information from families? And then, also thinking about their long-term goals beyond high school. You know, again, how are we engaging them in meaningful conversation or meaningful ways as a system so that that's where we, what we do our planning around? Is, you know, what are their goals for their students or what are their own goals personally? And then, what do we need to do differently to get them involved in their education? So that, again, they're prepared for, you know, meeting their own hopes and dreams when they leave us. So, we're learning a lot about different structures and tools and different ways to approach that family engagement. And then, finally, the Community Reintegration Center, just some exciting news here as well. So, an update on the student population, the students we serve. So, we have students who have earned their, excuse me, their FPS diploma in this calendar year. We have 33 students who have earned their high school credits or are earning high school credits. And then, you've heard about all of the efforts, the hard work that went into setting up that GED testing center. So, there are a lot of people around this table here who get super excited when they hear about students who are going, moving forward. So, I think there are four subtests maybe that they need to take. And we have two students who currently have one more to take. And then, they will have earned their GED. So, that's a big celebration. Dr. Mo was even reminding me, too, and we were talking about this earlier, that there was a story recently of a student who, you can help me out here if I'm not, you know, accurate with this. But when the student, the student was leaving, he, they wanted to make sure that he was very clear on everything that he had earned so far and what those next steps are. And really, like, promoted the idea of like, reach back to us, connect with us again if you need any support to continue your efforts moving forward. And he did, like, he reached back out to earn, you know, figure out how to earn.
He went online, so he only had completed three subtests and he got released. But we got a notification that he went online to another GED testing center to take the fourth test because we have to release his scores. So, we got a notification that he had gone to finish. Like, no matter what you do, go find this place, give them this card. We'll know you did it because we hold scores right until he goes someplace else. So, he did go to finish that fourth test.
So, that's when you talk about hope and really giving them what they need, you know, to feel like they have what they need to move forward. So, as they pursue different things. And then, also, there are members of the CRC who are part of the GRIP team. And so, many of the strategies and the programming and the actions that we're taking with the population at school in, at Franklin High School, some of those same strategies are applied with students who are attending CRC school as well. So, that's exciting news.
Thank you.
So, there ends our report.
Any questions?
What's the age range of those at the House of Corrections? I'm sorry, the reintegration, reintegration?
Yeah, 18 and 21.
Also, definitely past 18.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right now, that's who we have.
I appreciate that we're trying to find new ways to, to keep people off the at-risk report or to get them off because, obviously, the best way to, best way is to stay off the at-risk report to begin with. And if we can acknowledge, or find those students before they get on that list, then we're further ahead of the game. So, I appreciate that we're, and also prevention.
I will also say, I'm just going to brag a little bit. So, we have coaches who are external to our district who come and meet with our teams and, on a regular basis. And they meet quite often. And the feedback that we've gotten is, and I've met with three different people, is that our team in Franklin is very invested in the work and highly engaged. And they even said, even as far as like check and connect and some of the other efforts, they said, we may tap into you to kind of share, you know, some of the work that you're doing with others, too, who are trying to learn and, and do differently for our students. So, that speaks volumes to the team that's been part of this.
Thank you. Any further questions?
You know, for the students, some of the students which we identified with .5 credit because they were not able to pass the credit, are that students who newly identified, you know, are they able to, just because of .5 credit, are they able to make up that credit the second semester and then fall off the grid?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, there's a couple of ways to do that. So, if they're in the, if they're close to graduation, if they're seniors, we can use those credit recovery licenses that we have, and they can recover more than a half-credit and a half-credit's worth of time. So, that's one way. But we've also been partnering with teacher, teachers in our building to recover first semester credit as they take the second semester. So, we've done that a little bit more formally in math, but I know that other teachers have worked in other core areas. It's kind of that idea that Ms. Sunstrom brings up about summer school. When we have concerns about staffing and capacity, we want to help students recover that credit now while they're in the class and still learning. So, if you fail the first semester of IM1, you're still in IM1 second semester. But we want to help kind of backfill some of those things that might have been missed. So, that can be one way, and we've tried to grow that practice just to support students and do what's right by them.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Financial audit results from '21-'22, Mr. Cromie, please.
So, thank you. As you know, we're currently with Riley Penner and Benton. So, our representative, Matt, is here, and he'll go over our financial audits from the 2021, 2022 fiscal year.
Hi, my name is Matt Houghan from Riley Penner and Benton. I'm a manager at the firm. The auto went really well, like always. The financial statements presented fairly, which is what you would expect. There was no problems encountered. It's always one of my favorite districts to work on with the audit. That's because of the staff here. That's because the staff here, the business staff is always great to work with. For financial results, the general fund fund balance decreased this year by three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. However, this, this decrease is due to transfer at the end of the year of two-point-four million to the Long-Term Capital Improvement Fund. This is the fund where you stole money away for future capital improvements. So without that transfer, the general fund would have had an increase of over two million. Currently, the district has over, or has four-point-four million in, in the Capital Improvement Fund. The general fund fund balance at year-end was twenty-four-point-eight million. This represents about thirty-eight percent of the expenditure, thirty-eight percent of the budgeted expenditures, so you'd have about four and a half months' worth of expenses in your general fund fund balance. The district budgeted for sixty-four-point-seven million in expenses and had sixty-three million in expenses, and also received ninety-nine-point-six percent of the budgeted revenues. So obviously, the budget is right on par. For debts, the district did not take out any new debt during the current year and had payments of two-point-seven, just scheduled, payments of two-point-seven million dollars, paid interest of two million dollars, and has the end-of-year balance of fifty-one-point-nine million in debt. Other post-employment benefits, so OPEB, the net liability of just the standard OPEB of the district is four-point-four million. This was a decrease of eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand from the year before. The stipend, the net liability is eight-point-nine million. This was an increase of one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. These are just numbers we received from the actuaries, so no work is done on our part on this. We just received an actuarial report at the end of the year and just plugged the numbers in. And then the net pension assets, this is more commonly known as WRS, had a, had a net asset of eight million dollars, which was an increase of three-and-a-half million. This also comes from an actuarial report. Each year, we also have to do a compliance audit of the federal funds that the district receives, because the district receives over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in federal funds, we have to do an audit in accordance with the uniform guidance. This year, we had to test three major programs. We had to test the child nutrition program, so the school lunch, the ESAR funding, so the COVID money, and then Medicaid. And in those three programs, we had no compliance issues. We test like allowable costs, and then also the controls associated with it, like making sure that invoices are approved. And so we had no issues, so no findings in the audit report due to compliance. The other report that we issue with our audit report is the management letter. In here, you would typically find issues with like missing credit card receipts or issues with controls, not having all the invoices available, things like that. We do not have any issues like that to report in the management letter. The only management letter comment that we have is that we prepare the financial statements, so a comment you would, you would find at almost every school district. So that's not really an issue. That's all I had for you. If you had any questions?
Do we have any questions?
Well.
Please, Linda.
Yes, page fifty-five is the ESAR, the ESAR money, and there's a balance of one-point-four million, is that correct? It's still left to be spent?
What page were you, could you give the page again, please?
Fifty-five, the written page.
So page fifty-five is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, is that what you see as well? I show as page fifty-five. That is the total expenses for the current year.
The last column is unearned, unearned revenue, is that right?
Oh, yes, so eight-hundred-and-five-thousand in unearned revenue at year-end accrued. No, that would be the receivable, that would be the amount that's owed to the district at year-end. If it was a negative number, it would have been unearned, it would have been not spent. But that's the receivable at year-end.
So it was spent then?
Yes. The district, I'm not su, the amounts that would be unspent would show.
What, is there a balance of unspent money that we're still have available?
For the ESAR funds you're asking?
Yes.
Correct, we have, we have time to spend those yet through twenty-twenty-four, September?
Yep, I would, I don't have the exact number, around two-point-four to two-point-seven million dollars, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
If I'm right, we didn't get all that money at the, at the same time, some of it's paid out.
We have to spend it to get it. So this eight-hundred-five-thousand being referenced here were expenses in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That claim was put in as of June thirtieth of the fiscal year, becomes a receivable because we don't have it at fiscal year-end. And we don't have the cash in hand at fiscal year-end.
And the remaining balance doesn't show up in the audit report because it's not spent. So that two-point-four million or whatever you said it was, doesn't show up as, on the balance sheet.
Because it's just what was spent, okay.
Because it has not been spent.
Spent or claimed, okay.
It hasn't been claimed.
It's not revenue of ours until we actually spend something, so to claim it on the balance sheet or in this particular grid would be, would not be accurate because we have to spend it to get it.
Thank you.
Anybody have further questions?
I do know, I don't have the note reference, but regarding self-insurance, there was no actuary report prepared for that on self-insurance as far as, at this time, indicated because it wasn't beneficial. Would that possibly change in the future?
It's not really a requirement. I've never seen a school district do it. I think the business office reached out to them and it was very expensive. Definitely not cost-effective to complete the actuarial report.
Is that more a function of the number of people in the plan, or?
This was a new thing that came out in twenty-twenty-one and where it was, where we had to put it as a footnote that they didn't get one, and I've never seen a school district receive an actuary report for it. So we just have to put a footnote in saying that there was done.
Okay.
Or anything further? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-eight transportation contract, Mr. Cromie, please.
So currently, we're in a consortium with Greendale, Greenfield, and Whitnall. That consortium is really more for bargaining power might not be the correct word, but really to provide scale. And so typically in, like the transportation industry, there's not tons of them around, right? And so in order for a company to be interested in us, we have to provide enough busing to do that. So we've been in this consortium for many, many years, and they've gone out to, I shouldn't say gone out to bid, but they've renegotiated their contract with First Student several times over the course of the consortium together. Ultimately, the plan was to go out to bid prior to the twenty-two, twenty-three year and have a new contract in place. But bidding on the transportation contact, contracts typically go out a year or so in advance, and it was kind of behind the eight ball. So ultimately, they did a one-year renewal, which is where we are right now in the twenty-two, twenty-three year. Part of that process, or to follow up that process, they went to bid this summer as the consortium. Those bids were due sometime around mid-July. Six firms expressed interest, but only two ultimately submitted a bid. I was in place at that particular time, so those bids came to me. Along with that bid came an individual bid, just taking us out of the consortium and saying, this is what we would do if we took just your bid. So that came in from Go Right Way, who is represented here this evening. So ultimately, that bid, in looking at what our typical busing is, which is about thirty AM routes and thirty PM routes, or historically where it's been, it's not there this year, but historically where it's been. When we plug those numbers in, take a look at what is our midday 4K, any particular special ad routes we might have, going with the individual and pulling ourselves out of the consortium would have saved us a considerable amount of money over the course of that term. So at that particular point in time, we ran into some hiccups with First Student, and I started the negotiation process with Go Right Way and said, like, your bid, all of those things sound really great, but I, we'd have to have a couple of these other contingency pieces in place, or these other particular components in place. One of the big ones is probably around what does a yearly increase look like? So CPI is a term that we've been throwing around since Act Ten, right, all related to teacher salary? Well, given where COVID has put us, lots of CPI numbers have been added to contracts, and so both First Student and Go Right Way had a CPI, or tied to CPI in the particular contract. So I didn't feel entirely comfortable about that, so in working with Nate Hamilton at Go Right Way, we put in a floor and a ceiling. So the floor really protects Go Right Way, the ceiling really protects us. Ultimately, we both hope to land in the middle so that neither of us have to enact this. That's kind of the ultimate goal. But at eight percent, like I didn't want to see us at eight percent, but I understand that if it's zero percent next year, they probably can't live at zero percent either. So like, we understand that. And ultimately, the long-term thing with a five-year contract is we have to be in a relationship with them, and so I've come to this understanding, which is different than where I started, but if both of us aren't entirely super happy when it's all sudden done, we probably got a pretty good deal done. And so I used to think if both people were happy, we did well, now it's both people have to have a little irritation when they walk out. So that was one of the pieces. And then having worked with Right Way in the past and had a great relationship with them, a very responding relationship, and I really felt a partnership with them, it seemed logical that we could make that work in Franklin and bring that relationship over here. The rest of the details are very standard. There's typical fuel surcharges in there because fuel's a very fluid commodity, so that's typically in there. And then the other piece we're gonna add to help is we're going to bring the, I can't remember exactly what it's called, but the app that'll let parents track the bus. So pretty simply, you're gonna put a circle around your house, and we'll teach parents how to do that, but when the bus enters that particular zone, it's gonna ding and it says, it's time to go out, or my child's getting dropped off and it's time for me to now exit and I can come out and then get my child, or make sure my child's not standing in the rain for fifteen minutes while the bus is coming. So ultimately, I think we're gonna be in a great place, and as I mentioned, Go Right Way is here tonight, so if you have any questions, be happy to answer them, or if they have something more technical, I might ask them to come to the table and, and answer that particular piece.
I think that the app is huge. Parents have been asking for that for a while. I think the fact that they're here tonight is huge to me. Is Right Way a national corporation?
Perhaps you can come up here, Nate and Wendy.
Can you just yell from the bench?
I'm used to yelling backwards at kids in my bus. My name is Wendy Bast, I'm one of the owners of Go Right Way. We are a family-owned company here in southeastern Wisconsin. My grandparents started the company sixty-five years ago in Germantown. So we are, we are here, our corporate office is over in Oak Creek. So one of the things we typically say is, if you need us, if you need Nate, he's always available to you. If you need something more behind him, we are there right behind him. So we are, we're very excited to be working with you.
Is the app already existing, or you have to develop it?
No, it already, it already exists. So we actually utilize the parent app in about half the districts we serve, and, and we've learned along the way and, and feel very confident implementing it here at the start of a new contract, so.
You own the software?
We do not. We, we contract it through a third party, and, and we implement the technology on our vehicles, and then it's a free app to download on any smartphone for any parent, you know, that wants to use that.
Even, can the students even, can you use that too?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Yeah, high schoolers and middle schoolers now in many areas are using it.
Yeah, there's an add-on though to the, to the contract, right?
It is. It's, it is an add-on to the contract and it's, it's in the language somewhere.
Yeah, it's near the bottom. I believe it's five dollars a student, so for us roughly twenty-four thousand dollars. I think given the challenges we've had this year, a well-welcome piece. Having worked with Right Way, I don't anticipate any of those challenges happening next year, but I'll never say never, but having worked with them in Oak Creek, we implemented the app. We were, it was newer at the time, I think Mequon might have had it, maybe La Crosse might have had it around Alaska, I can't remember. So we did a soft rollout at one building, kind of got that all figured out, and then we pushed it out to everybody. Truthfully, I never had anybody contact me, so that's not to say that nobody had problems with it, but it wasn't getting to us. So parents were working with parents if they had an issue, like, my app's not working, how did you do that? And we heard very positive results from school buildings, mostly our school secretaries who take all of those phone calls. Just very positive things, that it was a very helpful addition to the piece, and so I know we added it into our contract over there when we renewed, and it seemed logical that, like, we would pop it in here, and I know parents, it's anecdotally because no one has again officially told me, but I know they will enjoy it because I've heard positive things from, from parents.
Parents have been asked, people are aware that this app exists, and they're, why can't we have it, so.
I've been at the bus stop at our neighborhood, and they seem to have some other app, it's talk to each other kind of thing.
Probably.
And you're also taking over the routing, is that right?
Yes.
Correct. That was a request from the district, and, and we are more than happy to do that as well.
And you typically do that also?
Yeah.
It's a very typical practice. I don't know that there's any place we don't do the routing.
Not anymore.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a more typical practice.
So we had an in-house routing expert, he retired in January, so it seemed logical that we would, again, bring this over to really the experts in it. It's important to note that we still own the routes, and so we can work with Right Way and say, we would like this to be a house stop for this individual, here's the reasons why, and they'll check and make sure that it's gonna fit, or we can say, can we move this to the corner? So we still have all of that ability to work with them inside of that, but they're the experts in it, right? That's what they do, and so they're gonna be able to manipulate that much faster, get things set up that much faster. And ultimately, a little bit different than it's run here in the past, we'll work with them to make sure Power School and Versatrans, which I'm assuming that's the routing software you use.
Yep.
That those are talking daily, so our parents will be able to check that daily. So if we make that adjustment and the route moves by a minute, they'll be able to see that, but the app will help that as well, because it'll have that targeted area. So those are all very similar practices that are happening in many school districts, those types of communications updated. Typically, it's at nighttime, updated during the night, so it's live the next day at some portion, but consistently being updated, like many systems now do talk constantly.
I know this, I know this starts next year, but is there, I know we're still short routes. Is there any way that this is implemented early in some way, shape, or form?
So I can't speak specifically for Right Way, but assuming the board approves tonight, Nate and I'll have a conversation in the next day or so, because we also would like to start summer school with them. So our contract, while that officially starts July one, we don't want to cross over summer school, so we've already had the informal conversation of can we make that work? And I've been given kind of the okay nod from Nate, so we'll officially try to hammer that out, but the second piece was to look, is there any relief we can provide, or Go Right Way can provide to us in the terms of our, our buses, because we're still coming late to elementary schools, and it's a cascading effect when you have limited high school, which then gets to limited middle school, and that, those times just get bumped. So we would certainly look to see if there's any relief that can be provided in that particular aspect. And then I know additionally with drivers, they'll be on the recruitment trail tomorrow probably, and figuring out what does that look like to staff? Again, approximately thirty AM, thirty PM buses and somewhere in that range, to make sure that come, well, I think it's September fourth or whatever, next year, we're like fully staffed and ready to go.
Anybody else have questions?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, for the record, I will, I will recuse myself from the voting. It's possible that I will be working for Right Way, so I don't, I don't think it's, it could be a conflict of interest, so. And there are five people here, so.
I move that we approve the transportation contract with Go Right Way as presented.
All right, motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mr. Alexandrovich. I think we should probably have a roll call vote.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will sign and have it over in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your partnership.
Yep.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
I will get it done very quickly before we jump to the next one.
Lauren, we're gonna have a fully executed copy.
Lauren, we're going to have a fully executed copy. I see that you have both of them signed, right? Yeah, all right.
Oh, that's great.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you again.
We'll get the call tomorrow. Thank you. All right, city and district fiber infrastructure MOU. Mr. Cromie again, please.
Yep, I'm just going to pull up the map on our, hopefully that'll show up. So this is a map of roughly all of Franklin. It's going to head out towards Muskego on the far, what would be our left. You can see 27th Street on the far right, but you can see all of our buildings in the red dots there. The city is in the blue. Ultimately, many, many moons ago, the Oak Creek, I'm sorry, the Franklin Public School District put together a fiber network. We ran that to all of our buildings that currently exists. The city is in the process of doing their own fiber network. Specifically, they're looking to get to water towers, police stations, fire stations and city hall. The goal of our MOU is that they would be able to use our infrastructure, which is essentially just the piping. So think PVC pipe run underground. It's a little different type, but think of that particular piece that's run underground. Multiple, multiple lines of fiber are run through it. So we have room in our existing infrastructure to run fiber through. And then the city is putting fiber through in areas where we're at some point going to need to get to. So thinking Ryan Road and the 220 or so acres that exist on the south side there. So ultimately, this MOU just simply says they'll be able to use our infrastructure, our piping. We'll be able to use their infrastructure once it's installed, their piping. If something happens to any portion of it, the owner of that particular piece fixes it. So we fix the piping and we re-s splice the fiber and we're good to go. So we're not sharing fiber, we're not sharing data of any sort. We're simply allowing access to the pipe.
Is there any risk that we would run out of room in the pipe?
Is there any risk? Well, I, I would say there's probably going to be something different technology-wise before we get to that.
Okay.
Being how fast technology is rising.
Okay.
Don't you have so many plugs at different hubs too? So like you're going to know if you're maxing at that, to your point, that you're not going to outrun that before technology changes.
So typically fibers run in like 12 strands, 24. I want to say 48 is the other one, but it's typically running that. And that's just the size of the cable that's running through. And then typically you have a two to three inch pipe put down there. So a 12-fiber cable is no bigger than what's coming off your microphone right now. And we're running 24. So 24 is maybe twice the size of that, running through that. So there's plenty, plenty of room in those particular, in that particular infrastructure for many, many lines of fiber.
Linda, please.
And then Gribin does, we can use their, they're putting pipe in too, right?
Yep, so yep, it goes both ways.
And are we planning on using that immediately for redundancy at all or?
So yes, one of, immediately probably not because we want to develop the plan. But ultimately, what we would like to do in each of our facilities is have two plugins. So if one of them happens to go down, we're not taking that building offline until that's repaired, which usually is 24 to 48 hours. But we would be able to essentially flip a switch and we'd be to the other side and we'd be back up and running. So we'd like to create some redundancy through that, which is essentially just creating a second circle. So if you think of our buildings in a circle, we are creating a second circle running through some of the city's pipe, which just allow us to switch back and forth if we had to.
But there's no immediate plans at this point?
No immediate plans to do that, but the plan has been discussed. So I've worked with Luann on like, what does that look like from us? So kind of her explaining to me, how does that even work? That's, this is not my world on the technol, like in the deep technology portion. So how does that work? And then if this were to be approved, we'll start working on how do we get that done? So we can provide some of those redundancies. Some of it will rely though on their, their piping being light. So for instance, the blue portion down here that's running from the water utility up towards where our branch of South Ogleyn is, so my cursor here. So some of it will require their work to be completed before we can make those things happen. But I know they're ready to go to bed. So I told them, I will let them know tomorrow where we are and I think their bids are written. They're just waiting to get sent.
Yeah, they just approved last night, so.
Yeah, I was going to say correct.
Approved last night at their meeting, so.
I think what's nice about this is it's a great opportunity for us to continue to partner with the city. We're trying to always build that connection and being a larger community. So I think it's a really nice opportunity. You're seeing it more and more in other neighborhoods or cities also, right? So I think it's, it's that progressive and way out there like things aren't, people aren't doing, but it is something that we can be ahead on and better support.
So they came to us, right? Just to ask them?
Yes, they did.
Thank you.
And this is no cost to us.
This is no cost to us until we decide to put some strands into our piping, so. Essentially, you know, think of it like Legos. Our end is open and they can plug into it when it's ready. But we're not running anything through it till we have that plan designed and ready to go.
Great, thank you. Any further questions?
Wait, so you're just clarifying your last statement then. So you're saying, I mean, they're going to incur some cost in putting some additional piping in.
Approving this MOU just allows us to share. They still have to install their infrastructure.
And we're sharing.
Yes.
Okay, right.
As Annalee mentioned, it's a good opportunity to develop more bridges because definitely I think there's a lot of room to improve the bridges with the city so that they can start sharing some of the cost, you know, in other avenues and ventures which we hopefully plan. So I think, you know, we develop friendships and bridges and hopefully that's will pay off, you know? Anyway, we have, it's no cost to us, so hopefully it'll be paying off as future.
Yeah, I think that's an important step. It's the same tax dollars, go to the city, go to the district. So if we can share resources in some fashion, that's more that can be done with those resources or wider that we can go with our resources in both the city and the school district.
Yes, it's a good start. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the city and district MOU as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wiskowski, seconded by Mr. Alexander Drovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Donation report, SNC Electric Company, Mr. Cromie, please.
Yep, this is the last thing I have for you tonight. So board policy requires us to bring a donation of $1,000 or more for formal approval. SNC Electric Company approached Andy Thompson looking to provide $2,500 towards our CTE program. Ultimately, they requested those to be used on scholarships or stipends for internships or job shadowing programs, educational opportunities, field trips. Ultimately, they're looking to promote CTE. They are, obviously they're working in the electric field, so it makes sense that that's where they would want to direct their dollars. And ultimately, having worked through many of these donations, they're looking for us to improve our ability to educate kids. So some of them may want to join that particular field or even SNC Electric when they leave high school or when they leave MATEC or when they leave their four-year college. So they're looking to just donate and help us improve the offerings that we can do.
Is, this is fabulous. Is there a, should we be looking at a more robust way to, to figure out where the money should go? Should be fun, should be fun to.
That, that's a great question. So typically when donations come in, so I don't want to minimize this. It's $2,500, so we're not building a technology wing with it, right? So we try to adhere as much to what they're looking for with their dollars as we possibly can. If we were looking at something, I don't even know. If we were looking at something in the six figures and they wanted to do something, then I think that's like a broader conversation of how, how do we wrap that entirely in? But something in, in this range, I think makes total sense to try to fulfill their exact wishes.
I agree completely. What I'm saying is, is generally we should, not for this one, but generally I think we, there might be a, something to talk about in the future of, of what amount do we start saying, okay, where are we going to use this? Or even if it's this amount, great, we can, there's a scholarship in, through the educational foundation that, that this would go to.
I agree with your concern also that it's not very specific. And I'm not sure how else my needs would sit there. I'm wondering if it might have been more appropriately given to the foundation if it's scholarship related.
Well, they do have the areas on here though that it's going towards. I mean, we have the advanced manufacturing, science, engineering, technology and the trades, which is pretty specific. And it's a nice amount of money. Like we're extremely happy to have the partnership with SNC Electric Company. When you start dividing that out by the amount of students in the house courses, you know, it's going to go to good use, but it's not going to take long to put that to good use. So I think if we wanted, we could look at the policy and put a cap on it. And when we talk about it being a capital project or something like that, maybe that's the conversation.
Yeah, I think there's a conversation to be had around the policy in the future. For tonight, thank you very much to SNC Electric Company. We appreciate, we appreciate this and, and you know, look forward to continuing to work with them and have them be a community partner.
I would say from having experience with kind of the donations in that particular range, if something came in, let's, let's use $100,000 as an example in six figures. Before that would even come to the board, we'd be having conversations to make sure that whatever that they're requesting the dollars be used for, we're one, able to do. Two, it's something that fits our coherence plan and ultimately the educational plan of the school district before we bring that to the board.
Sure.
So I look at this as this is going to prop up CTE, help those particular programs. Again, something massive, those talks are done, settled before that even comes to the board for approval with some input along the way to make sure that we're fitting all of the things that we anticipate you would be looking for before we say yes to that.
No, and I think, you know, one of the ways is that any donations, you know, which we get is first of all very welcome, you know? It kind of, it provides as always, you know, each small drop of order can start accumulating a bucket, you know, and make a difference. Especially in this, even in the small range, you know? If we encourage more and maybe even give them some kind of free putback that hey, you gave us this much amount of money, this is exactly we use. And, you know, some kind of a feedback to them so that hey, you know, that is always, I think, a good way of developing more, you know, initiative to the companies that hey, you know, you gave us $2,000, look, you know, we so much money we did. Now, you know, if you give us maybe 10,000, we can give you more, you know? So I think, I think, so I'll definitely recommend, you know, the district is giving them some feedback that hey, thank you so much for your donation, really appreciate it. And this is what we did after we did whatever we did with it. Because I think that's a very important thing because we want to develop, you know, this relationship where they feel that, they feel you see the feedback and they can.
I agree, and I expect Andy will do that.
More my concern is that, you know, Mr. Thompson has a, a lot of areas that he has to manage, overseeing student experiences, managing his community partners. And so my concern is more just stewarding our donors and making sure that they, and so we should have more conversations about which donation should go through the foundation just because that's what they do is steward those things. But I know you guys have a great relationship and you're.
I would say a lot of the reason the donation came because of the relationship. And I think if we want to talk donations, we might almost want to consider adding it as an agenda item. Because this is really just the approval of the donation.
So anyway, this is a very generous donation and I move that we accept the donation from SNC Electric Company.
I second.
Our motion, motion is made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Dr. Khan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right. State convention reports. Does anybody want to start?
Angie and Ann and Linda and I all attended, all attended the convention. Does anyone want to start?
I'll start. So I attended obviously the delegate portion of the convention. All of the resolutions that we discussed and looked at did pass, save for the one encouraging passage of a universal student-free lunch that, that was voted down. And actually, we did not get to the end of the agenda because we eventually lost a quorum because the delegate session went so long, historically long delegate session. So that was exciting. The other fun thing is I sort of had a theme for my con, for my conference attendance, which was around literacy. So I've sort of become obsessed with the topic curricularly, how kids learn, how districts are approaching this. I gave you all a number of resources that if you at all are interested or anyone in the audience is interested, are some very interesting resources. All of the books I have ordered and started reading, so I'm happy to lend them to people. And this is my new obsession, literacy.
Thanks for the warning.
Fair warning.
You've been warned.
Bob knows.
You've been warned.
But there were some really good sessions. And this movie called The Truth About Reading, is that what it's called? Will soon be streaming on some platform.
It is, and we don't have to pay for it anymore. They're doing the paid route.
Let's go a little entree to the topic. Anyway, I'm done now.
Thank you, Linda.
Anyway, I focused a little bit more on the finance side. I did go to the one on kind of overview from this, from the state DPI. Put that on and that was interesting. Nothing, kind of the history of the, of the, where we're at. And I did include the, I think a reference in the report. I don't know if that link works, but you should know that the, I think we can still get to the conference website and go through that. I noticed there weren't a lot of PowerPoints included there in the past. Usually you could flip through them. So that was a good one. I also went to one on school finance with Elm Brook where they can, where they manage, they do capital projects without borrowing. And they have a lot of other interesting things that they highlighted, particularly in the health insurance area. And you can even include that. And they're an interesting district to watch. So I highlighted that also. And I also noticed that there was a lot of reading stuff. So I picked one to make sure I would see what was going on. And it was the Du Berlin session. You were in there also?
I was.
Yes, so very strategically with the way they presented and implemented their program. So then also I did, I did pick up one more book. It was a free book, Four Disciplines of Execution of Educators. I haven't really read it yet, so I'll pass it along when I did.
We're not going to start executing educators, are we?
No.
Disciplines of execution.
Execution, not for. For educators.
All right.
And I did go through the exhibit hall.
Linda, watch out, Alan's trying to over you to try to get to the block.
I didn't think I'd do this book study. Kind of cool thing, awesome. I'm going to give it to Annalee so she can, you know, maybe.
Sure. It's soft.
It can show up around the office, somebody did a good job.
We can definitely make good use of that.
So what.
Bob might need it with all the reading that Angie's doing on literacy.
I thought we could move around the office, you know, whenever one day.
Oh, we will.
We have a meeting tomorrow, so you should probably hold on to that.
And it's always good to, you know, the networking opportunities are also interesting and who you bump into. I did talk to a lady that she's moving beehives from Florida to northern Wisconsin. That's kind of her business. She did that, but he's, that they're going to be with the, you know, fruit trees in Florida and then they come back up and.
She migrates them during the year.
Puts them in a semi and loses them there.
That is interesting.
It was an interesting thing. Also went on the field trip for the egg program at Vincent High School.
Oh, you did?
I did see their animals and did sit next to somebody who, he's a turkey farmer. He has.
Turkey?
Yes, he rolls turkeys. But he had an interesting story in that he's actually a graduate of UW Madison in chemistry. He kind of found his way back to his family's farm, so. Always just talking to people on how they got to their career choices is always interesting. It was also interesting that, you know, the conference is in Milwaukee and you get people from all over the state. Really some small, small districts, very interesting places. But they all seem to have a connection to Milwaukee. Either they're, they were, they were born in Milwaukee and they moved or their parents still live here. So it's just dynamics of the, of Wisconsin and the fact that we are, you know, it's, it is, public education is a state, really a state institution. You kind of remember that when you're at the, at the conference, so. And I will not say anything more after that.
Thank you. I attended although sparingly because I was on my bus route. But I did, I did see David Horzager, the keynote speaker on the first day and all the awards. And it was interesting what he had to say about trust and, and how trust is the most important thing in any organization. And I think we're, I think we're building toward that, but I think we could use some of his, some of his keys to. I think we could use some of his, some of his keys to continue to earn the trust of each other and, and of course, the constituents, and, and move forward as a district. I did, there are eight, eight seminars that will be available for download that, that I guess we paid extra for for me. But they are not available yet, so I've not, I have not seen those. But I was lucky enough to, to be asked to give a breakout session about legislative advocacy with Dr. Cohen and Dr. Miller. And I think it went well, maybe 70 people were there to watch it and to participate. I don't know, maybe you can say how it went.
I heard it went great.
It did go really well. It was a nice journey through the multiple years and setbacks and the movement forward to get some legislation changed to allow some of the things that are going on with our school accountability report, having the reintegration center and the fluency of students there and how that's reported. And for me, not being here through that, it gave me an hour to sit and listen and learn from people that were here through the journey. So I thought it was really nice. Dr. Mo and I were there, and she was a part of the end part of it. So now we get to see kind of how that comes into action.
Next year?
Yep, next year.
The first report card, the data comes, it's separated before it ever reaches us.
As far as.
They take care of it on, on DPIs, and we don't do anything. They, I'm sure it's not this, but they separate it out before they show up the report.
What I think is neat about it is like, the work's there for a good reason. And it's still, they're, they're all our students. Because what I worried about is like, does it mean we're separating it? And we're not. What it's also done is like, Dr. Mo now meets monthly, I think it is, maybe even more, with the three other districts that house, like House of Correction or, or Reintegration Centers to brainstorm, like some of that grip work that you heard about tonight and how we're using that in multiple different venues, now talking about how are we, are we reaching our youth? And I feel like in that area, we've really led, and Dr. Mo's now able to help them know or understand what our journey has been, how that benefits them, and then some things that we've been able to learn. So it's a, it's a really neat, different way that we're working to meet students that have different needs. And so I think that's kind of another piece that came out of that bigger project that is kind of exciting to hear about.
I also did attend Andy's session on equity. What was it? It was kind of a weird title.
Oh, no, it was a great title. I'm kidding.
It was, yeah. It's essentially around equity.
Funding.
And.
Funding?
How we need to take a look at our student scores and take a look at certain markers. And so the ones I brought from Franklin were socioeconomic status, students with disabilities, and English language learners, and how do they compare on the fourth, eighth, and 10th grade standardized testing. And if they're not up to par with what we would consider a student with no markers, how are we directing funds to help increase those scores? Kind of if we raise the tide for our lowest students, we'll raise the tide for all philosophy.
How did you, how did you find the presentation?
It was definitely a different perspective, and I look forward to seeing it implemented in different ways. I mean, that's really where I think funding is going. We have to put our money where we get the best results. And that was the direction you're, we're going in. I don't think we see enough of that in our funding practices, so it was refreshing.
Good.
And as far as legislative advocacy goes, continuing, I'm gonna be going to the Capitol on March 23rd, and you're going to? Great. Perhaps we can.
I'm thinking.
And you're gonna go as well?
I think so.
Great. That'll be carpool, and we'll have to leave early so that we can, so that we can get back for our meeting, because there was a board meeting that night.
Yeah, it is.
Which will be fine.
We'll make it work.
Have our meeting scheduled earlier in the afternoon. So I'm glad, I'm glad more people are going. That's great. All right, anybody else have any comment about the state convention? All right, thank you, everyone. School board liaison reports, personnel and policy, policy 6325, private school and home-based educational services. Ms. Cody and Dr. Khan, please.
This is like a 30 seconds or less. You can actually jump in. It's really a technical change, changing the word student to people, or vice versa, I believe it is. Wouldn't really have to come to the board for approval, because it's a technical change. It's in the rules, not the policy. But we've been bringing them by habit over the years. And then we update the date that it's been reviewed to just be part of our five to six year cycle. So you can take action on it. We wouldn't have to either, because it's a technical change.
All right, so since, since we're here, I'm looking for a motion to approve the new language to personnel and policy number 6325. So move.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Alexandrovich, seconded by Mrs. Wackowski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Board liaison reports. All right, school and community engagement reports.
I can't even remember what I do.
Short two weeks, yeah, convention in there makes a difference.
I was lucky enough to attend the play.
Oh, yes, we all attended.
My daughter had a great weekend, weekend of her life.
His daughter did a great job. How was it?
The music.
Tendance was great.
Tendance was really good. I was three for three. And also, Dr. Beer's daughter was fabulous.
We love theater. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for attending.
Bet. Yes, I enjoyed it thoroughly, as did my son.
Very good.
All right, school board meeting debriefing. Any school board member comments? All right, future agenda items, Ben Franklin's school presentation, academic and technical excellence scholarship nominees, health clinic discussion, and 23 to 25 audit contract approval will be next meeting, perhaps Friends of Franklin as well. Summer fall 2023 early college credit and Start College Now request, applications, defeasance authorization and board policy 5801 student progress reporting will be at a further meeting. Looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:38. Thank you.